Normally start right at six thirty, but we're missing one planning commissioner right now that we haven't. Give a little more time for missing commissioners show up, but she might not, we hadn't heard from her, so I don't want to keep everybody here. So we'll go on and get started if you're ready. Okay, thanks. All right. With that, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Slattery if she'll open us up in prayer. Not to put you on the spot there, Wendy, but put you on the spot, didn't I?
At least swivel your head this way. Would you all bow your heads in prayer with me, please? Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening thanking you for another day in our beautiful community. We ask for your continued blessings on our community. We ask that you guide our decisions as a group. And most importantly, this evening, we ask for patience and grace as we listen to one another and guide us in the decisions we make, that they will be pleasing in your eyes. In our holy Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Take one, we call the roll, please. I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm just so used to saying sorry back.
Tim Altizer.
Here.
John Evans.
Here.
Barry Hardwick.
Here.
Charles Hasty.
Here.
Beth Longmire. Michael Martin.
Here.
Vanessa Silkwood.
Here.
Wendy Slattery.
Here.
Jeff Coker.
Here.
That gives us eight, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, that gives us eight, so that gives us a quorum. Next up on our agenda is public hearing, and we have several people that have signed up for this. If y'all are not familiar with this process, this is y'all's time to speak, and this public hearing is regarding Willowbrook Phase Two, the Comprehensive Development Plan. It's a request by national healthcare corporations, rezoned fifteen point eight acres from mixed residential plan development to mixed residential plan development. This property is located at one thousand Berkeley Avenue, at the east end of Ensbroke Avenue, on the north side of Vietnam Veterans Parkway, and on the east side of Saundersville Road. If you're not familiar with this process, you have up to five minutes to speak on this. They have a number of folks signed up. I don't want to stifle anybody, but at the same time, if you willingly say, hey, that person said everything that I wanted to say, you don't have to come up and say, you don't have to come up and say it just because you've signed up. So it's completely at y'all's discretion on that. But with that, our first speaker, and when I ask you up, if you would, state your, first thing, state your name and your address before you lead off on that. But first up, it looks like we have Jeremy Ragsdale, if you'd stop the public, please, sir? And Jeremy, hold up just a second. Are you a representative from the developer? Okay. You will have an opportunity, presentation time on that. So just noticed the Atlanta address. I was like, you might not be from around here. And Ken, I think you're kind of the same way on that. Y'all will have the opportunity to present to us then. Next up is Mike and Brenda Lucas. Okay, okay. Stephen Anderson?
Good evening. Stephen Anderson, my wife Jill. We live at one fifty-six Al Hollow Road, which is the cul-de-sac that backs up to the back of the property. Longtime resident here, don't normally come to these things. We bought into Millstone back in, I guess it was January of last year, moved in July of last year in 2023. We knew for years that there was going to be assisted living nursing home going there. And then, of course, over time, we heard they did some studies there, and it was going to be pretty expensive to build. And when we were actually talking with Goodall before we purchased, they said, you know, we're hearing they're not going to build. We're not sure what's going to go there. My or our opinion was, you know, the nursing home assisted living was kind of what we thought initially was going to go there, and we were fine with that. The problem that I've got with this is the buildings that are right at the end, in the purple, where they V, the three buildings, those literally are right behind our back porch. The way the property on the back of our houses, and they're called villas, are, we've got about probably forty feet of grass, and then it goes up about a twelve-foot embankment. And then these are going to be sitting about, if I remember right, if the footage that I've been told is right, I think it's thirty feet from the bottom of that hill, and they're going to be elevated. That's just too close. For privacy, for our sake, I would think if I was anyone that was possibly going to look to buy in one of those backing up to where we are, it's just too close for them, I would think, as well. I did miss the meeting a couple of weeks ago. I've been dealing with the back issue, so I don't know some of the things that might have been talked about. But I know there's supposedly some trees that were talked about being put in for privacy and so forth. I just don't think there's enough room to get some trees that would be beneficial. And as I said, with it being elevated and being as far back on their property, and it's close to ours, I just don't think it makes sense. From, I guess, practical, you know, issues that I've got with it, you know, we probably would not have bought there if we'd known something was going to be built that close. You know, we liked the fact that it was backing up to wooded area. We knew that there was going to be something built, but we thought it was going to be much further back on the property. Did not think we would certainly have people living, you know, within seventy-five feet of the back of our back patio. Trying to think if there's anything else. Yeah, I don't know what solutions have been proposed. I don't know, you know, my solution or recommendation would be to at least try to move those buildings back into the development to get some easement, to be able to get some bigger trees that could possibly provide some privacy. I don't know, based on the way they've done the layout at that's possible. If not, my recommendation would be to at least remove those buildings, or at least make them narrower or something to get them to where they're not right on the very back of the property. That's my comments.
Thank you, sir.
Chris, your handwriting is about as good as mine, so I'm going to guess your last name's Maynard, if I'm misspeaking on that. One fifty-six Dayflower?
Yes, I did not intend to.
Oh, okay, okay. Beth Crips?
Hello, I'm Beth Crips, and I live right next door to Stephen and Jill, and my husband is with me, Tom. I'm not used to speaking.
What's your address? I'm sorry, ma'am, but what is your address again, this girl?
One fifty-two Al Hollow Road.
All right, thank you.
And I'm not used to speaking to a panel like this. I taught at Hendersonville High School, so I'm used to teaching high school students. So I hope I can get through this okay. I've got just a few little notes. We're one of the three villas that I think will be most impacted by this, because I have the steepest hill, and they own down to the bottom of the hill, and I stepped it off the other day. There's thirty feet there. So they could build right up, I mean, just right close to me. And I could have moved to Nashville if I'd wanted to live side by side right next to somebody. But we downsized, and this was going to be our last home. And I could tell you, it's going to ruin my view, but that's not important to everybody else but me and us. They're going to want to add a hundred and seventy-five units. And I know that when I sent my husband to Walgreens not too long ago, he was gone an hour. Now, I'm pretty sure that he's telling me the truth, but there was a train, there was lots of traffic, and it took him an hour to go to Walgreens and back, just to pick up a few things. And I don't know if you're familiar with Millstone, but Walgreens, not the Walgreens down in the middle of town, but the Walgreens, that's right there at, close to us. So yes, the traffic is terrible. When I pull out, I have to sit there and guess if anything's coming up the hill, and I can see really well down this way, but here I can't. And we're going to add a hundred and seventy-five. I lived at Album for a year. Album is another over fifty-five, and almost everyone there had a car, and some of them had two cars. And so if we're going to put an over fifty-five apartment building there, those people are going to have, I'm sure they're going to be good and wonderful people, but they're going to all have cars, and we're going to all be trying to get out. And I drove around Gallatin and Hendersonville to see if I could see any other apartments inside subdivisions, inside residential areas, and I didn't see any. And so it makes me think that this is something kind of unusual. And I don't know when this, when the nursing home got approved, how many years ago, but there ought to be some sort of expiration date, because things change. And it's, Saundersville Road over there has really changed. It's not like it used to be many years ago. There's cars, cars, cars. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley Brennan?
Hi, my name is Shirley Brennan, and I live at one four zero Al Hollow Road. I'll try to keep this under five minutes. I'm against the zoning for this apartments, and I wish that you all would vote no, for several reasons. One, it's not going to blend into our community. We don't have any three-story buildings in our community, and they have a huge three-story building right in the middle. Millstone has cottages and townhomes, and all of their garages are on the back. On these buildings, they're all going to be on the front, they're going to tear down every inch of all those trees and put a building or road. And it's going to be a lot of concrete. So I think another issue, I feel, is they didn't put enough parking spots. I've got from the planning commission, all the extra parking spots. The garages, a lot of people use for storage. I would say, I lived in Gallatin, and I had an apartment, two-bedroom apartment. I had a one-car garage attached, and I used it for storage. Half of the people used it for storage. They could force them to do it, but why wouldn't they just move down to Album when they have a garage on the premise and a space for their car? Album is not fully rented out, and I think, why do we need another fifty-five-plus apartments within two miles from each other? And then you also have the fifty-five-plus in Forest Park, which is going to be built right above the, right above that golf course. So it's going to be a lot of fifty-five-plus and a lot of traffic, like Beth was saying. Right now, sometimes it's hard to even get to Saundersville Road, because there's a road that, for a turning lane, to get past the train, and you can't even pass that. So when you have five hundred homes in Forest Park, a hundred and twenty homes in Stonecrest, that development, a hundred and seventy-four apartments here, it's way too much on Saundersville Road. I mean, we've got students driving to the high school. We've got school buses. You know, I'm all for development. I love development. I love new stores and things like that. But when it affects our traffic and having to, possibility of wrecks, we need a light at Dayflower. By any chance, if you could put a light there, we would really appreciate it as soon as possible. There's still some remnants of an accident that was there about a month ago. So, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. But, so anyway, as far as cars go and the storage, half the people in my apartment complex in Gallatin use their garages for storage. So that means they, I think they attributed maybe, for a hundred and seventy-four apartments, they attributed less than half for extra spaces, car spaces. If they, they'll have to do another half of that for people who'd put storage in, you know, use their garages for storage. I did, and the guy above me, he had a two-car, he had a two-bedroom home apartment, and he used his two-car garage for storage. And then there was another couple that lived near me, and they use their car, their garage for storage, and they use two spaces. So there's very narrow roads in this plan that they're doing, and the whole look is garages, too. Whereas, like I said, in most of our Millstone homes, townhomes and garages, townhomes and cottages, they're mostly in the back. You don't even see them, so it's not going to fit in the community. So where are they going to put these cars? Are they going to put them, you know, these extra cars? Are they going to park them on Cherry Grove? Are they going to park them on Carriage House? Are they going to park them on Al Hollow? I heard that they were going to build a fifteen-foot wall between Al Hollow and their apartments. So imagine this is Al Hollow, our homes. Think about thirty feet. That's all Goodall gave us for our backyards, and then a fifteen-foot wall. You know, okay, good. We're not going to see the apartments, maybe. But, you know, I didn't plan to look at a wall either, not unless they're going to put, I mean, they may talk about it, and they may put trees in front of the wall. But I don't know. That doesn't sound good either to me. So also, I wanted to talk about, if this property was sold to a developer, and it was point twenty-eight acres for a townhome or cottage, or point sixteen of an acre, that would be fifty-three and ninety-three homes. It wouldn't be a hundred and seventy-four apartments. It would be a lot less if it was sold to a developer and put homes in there, even if they were townhomes and cottages. So it's just a lot. It's just a lot for that small fifteen acres in our community. There are no walking trails in there. There's really, I didn't see in the plans they had if they had a grassy area. They did have a dog park, but I don't think you could throw or catch a ball in a dog park, you know, for, if you had kids, or, they do have a kids' park, too, but it's fifty-five-plus. But I lived in an apartment in Murphysboro, and they had a beautiful area that you could walk in, a nice grassy area. And this is all concrete and buildings. You know, if they could make it smaller, you know, not take up all of that room, I understand it. It's their property. They want to build on it. But it's so much inside a residential community. So that's why I'm asking you to not vote, to vote no. And I appreciate the time to speak, and I hope I didn't go over my five minutes.
Thank you. Mary Lou Cook?
I'm Mary Lou Cook. I live at one forty-eight Al Hollow. And I want to thank you for having the opportunity to address the committee. I know you all have the citizens' best interest at heart. So my only question is, do we really need another apartment complex? Two miles down the road, we already have a fifty-five-plus apartment complex. It has a thirteen percent vacancy rate on it. There's no waiting list to get in. So at this point in time, there doesn't seem to be a need to have this kind of a structure built. I think, as most of them have said, it's a small area, fifteen acres. Most of that land is very rocky. After they allow for roads, parking, pool, sidewalks, dog runs, dumpsters, common areas, pickleball courts, they're looking at probably twenty homes per acre. That's really dense. Twenty units per acre, a hundred and seventy-four units, and it's in the middle of a subdivision. So like Shirley, I'd like for you all to vote no on this, just because it's so dense, and it adds to our infrastructure issues. Thank you.
Thank you. You're going to have to forgive me. I cannot, I cannot read, but one oh four Al Court. I didn't want to butcher your name. I'm sorry.
I will pronounce it for you, Casimera Gallegos.
Thank you.
So as you said, my address is one oh four Al Hollow Road. And I think all my neighbors express everything already, so I just want to stand here and say that I am also against this development, and I support my neighbors. I live at the very end of the street. The biggest concern for me is the traffic, because it's hard, as they say, to get out to the main road, and then the train runs like every hour on the hour. And if there is no train, you know, I go to the Y daily, so it takes me like five to seven minutes to get there. When the train is going, I can hardly get out of my community, even, you know, to get to the, to the light there. So that's, that's a big thing. And the second thing, the noise, I think, from the community, the traffic, all these cars, they're going to have pickleball, and we are, the community is pretty high up, but our area is down. So the noise is going to carry a lot. They also are proposing some kind of dog run. So, you know, dogs, barking, all of that. And our cul-de-sac, Al Hollow, is just the only area that is really down. So that noise, I think, I'm not an engineer or anything, but just from a logical point of view, all that noise is going to be contained there. So, supporting my neighbors, and I would appreciate if you guys voted no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Gina Kennedy?
Hi, I'm Gina Kennedy. I'm here with my husband Doug Kennedy, and we are Hendersonville natives. We grew up here in Hendersonville.
What's y'all's address?
I'm sorry, four twenty Carriage House Lane.
Thank you.
We grew up in Hendersonville and raised our family here in Hendersonville. And we live right next door to what this development would be. But even if we didn't, it is just not a good fit for Hendersonville. I can honestly say that if I drove through Saundersville Road and into Millstone and didn't even live there, I would look and say, this just doesn't make sense. This is just not a good fit. It's very unprecedented to have any type of a rental structure built inside of a residential area as such. I have worked at assisted livings, and I have also worked for apartments. So I know that they are twenty-four-seven businesses. They are not just a morning or afternoon business. There is activity that happens at assisted living or apartments all day long. There are guests and traffic that comes. There's a whole lot of ambulance and first responder calls to these type of communities. And it just doesn't make sense to have all of this going on inside of a residential area. As my neighbors have said, the area is so dense, there just doesn't seem to be enough, enough space to put everything that they would like to put, and allow for parking, and allow for an easy access in and out of the community. I think it would be very taxing on our city services to be able to have first responders, police officers, even right now, the Amazon packages and UPS, all of the things that would have to come in and out of the community on an already very busy Saundersville Road. We've even got a college, as you all know, that we're proud to have, a college and a school, and so many other things going in on Saundersville Road, that this would just not be a good fit for the city. And we would appreciate you very much. As you've done, you've shown such great pride in the city, and we thank you so much for the many hours that you spend planning it and trying to keep it the city that it is, with the railroad that we know they will be working on in the next coming years. That's just one more thing that's going to make Saundersville Road a real problem for the residents that already live there and the things already planned to go there. So thank you so much. We appreciate you considering this.
Thank you, ma'am. And last, it looks like Eve Huterson.
Hello, everyone. Eve Huterson. I live at eight ninety-seven Cherry Grove Drive. So I'm on the road that bounds the property on the south and eastern side. And I guess I'm kind of an outlier this evening, but I'm in favor. And a lot of the neighbors on our street have talked about it, too. And I understand the impact on Al Hollow is more significant. But it's my understanding that your decision tonight is focused on the nursing home zoning versus zoning to make this possible. And, you know, it's my opinion and that of several of my neighbors, that this would be far more favorable than having a nursing home on the property. So I'm in favor. But I do want to raise two infrastructure questions. I certainly agree with my neighbors about the traffic problem. We need a light, or two, maybe even. And it is getting worse. And now that Stonecrest is building right across the street, that is a concern for sure. I came from Nashville, so Hendersonville traffic seems very minimal to me. But, but still, turning left and trying to get towards town, it is a significant concern traffic-wise. And the other question I wanted to raise, we have a water supply problem in Millstone, and I would appreciate, you know, as this process moves forward, some dialogue around that. We, as I'm sure you guys know far better than I, have White House water, and there's some dispute going on that our property developers and managers haven't favored us with an explanation for. But they can't run the water that irrigates the property under the contract that they're obligated to run when the droughts occur and the natural sources on the central and eastern sides and north sides of the property run dry. And it's my understanding that we have very limited representation in the management of our property, which is not your all's problem, but that's the reason that we have so little information. But it's my understanding that the water coming from White House, there's some concern over how the water that would feed the irrigation system would impact the flow to the fire hydrants, which, I'm not an engineer either. I don't understand why that would be the case. But before we start with another major need for water on the property, it sure would be nice if somebody be nice if somebody could help in whatever negotiations go on with the water sources to get that resolved. So I would ask if that could be considered as part of this process. Thank you.
And that was our last speaker who signed up for the public hearing. Did anybody intend to sign up for the public hearing that did not get an opportunity to?
Hi, good evening. My name is Anna, the last name MIAKIZ, Mia Kish. I live on nine three eight.
Can you spell your name one more time?
Sure. Anna, A-N-N-A, Mia Kish, MIAKIZ, which means soft. Yeah, and nine three eight Cherry Grove Drive.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I want to add to all the people, my neighbor said, that the traffic will create a really unsafe environment, not only for children, but for everyone. Because people who are fifty-five and up, they're still working, so it will be a lot of people driving, and our area is not ready for this kind of traffic. The other thing is the water supply, like my neighbor said, we have just one well used and it's five. And I was told that they won't be used because it's hard to maintain, to do the maintenance of these wells. So we have just one well. When the water, something happened a few weeks ago, our lawn stopped being watered, so I think that is a big problem. If you add more houses, it will be even more. And people have, don't have the, enough water to take a shower even, so the pressure is low. And the other thing is the intersection on Saundersville. If we have traffic, it will be really a big problem because it will be forced up, so I don't see that working, no way that people will be patient enough to let others go first. So I think that's it, and thank you. Sorry for my accent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that being our last speaker, I'm going to declare the public hearing on the issue closed, on that, and we'll, the way our agenda will kind of flow along, we've got a couple more items to get to first, and then we'll hear a presentation from the developer and we'll open it up from discussion from planning commissioners then, on that. But next up on the agenda is public comments relative to agenda items only, and we did not have anybody sign up for that, so I'm gonna declare that closed. And then the next up item on our agenda is acceptance of the agenda, and so I will entertain a motion from a commissioner to approve as presented in a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Silkwood and a second from Commissioner Slattery. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Next up on our agenda is approval of last month's minutes from our October first meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve as presented. We have a motion, motion to approve from Commissioner Altizer, and I think a second from Commissioner Hasty on that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion carries as well. Next up on our agenda is our consent agenda, and it looks like there's two items on here and, no, oh, I'm sorry, I got a little ahead of myself. There's several items on here. So I'll let Director Free kind of quickly go through these, these items that are on our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move this a little closer to me so everybody can hear. The first item on the consent agenda is Berry Hill, Phase Two, Section Three, preliminary plat. This is the area out at Berry Hill where it looks like a street should be going through, and this is going to connect that. It's one of the last little areas out there to develop. Also, we have the Cages site plan at one thirty-five Walton Ferry Road. This is a development, a new building. I think there's a daycare right, there right now on Walton Ferry. That'll be demolished and they'll build this building. There'll be batting cages, I think it's maybe ten or fifteen, maybe fif- fifteen batting cages, ten batting cages. So a lot of batting cages there, so that'll be, be a nice building. And then we have, the next two items are Phase Six and Phase Seven, final plats for Millstone, out in the area that we're talking about, about Willowbrook. It's the remaining single-family residential portions of Millstone. And then finally, we have Stonecrest, Fa- Phase Five, Section Three, final plat, and this is also out there right off of Saundersville Road. This is the final fa- section of that phase of development. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Free. With that, I will entertain, or I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Can I get a second on that?
With all staff comments.
With all staff comments, of course. And second from Commissioner Altizer, and we will move into a roll call vote on that. Zach, will you read the results, please?
Motion pass with a total of eight yeses, zero nos, and zero abstains.
Thank you, Zach. Next up on our agenda is item eight, this is development plans. We have one of those, and this is what I think most of y'all were here for, is the Willowbrook Phase Two Comprehensive Development Plan. And again, I appreciate the public, your opportunity to speak. Now's the opportunity for the developer to make their presentation, for us to ask questions as commissioners, so if you would come up and entered, be ready to introduce yourself, I'm gonna let staff give an introduction first. And it, who was, Timothy, you had this one, so you can kick us off, please.
Thank you. So before I get into this staff report, I would just like to make a note that the site location map shown on the, the first page of, of the report, that lower right-hand image shows incorrect location, that's actually the hospital. The large image shows it correctly. And all the, all the notices that went out, the paper and all that stuff, that, I did go back and check and those locations are shown correctly. So this is the only area, the only spot where that, that shows up incorrectly.
Oh, Timothy, if you can, if you can pull that mic a little bit closer.
Sure.
So everybody could, could hear that. Thank you.
So a little bit of, a little bit of history on Willowbrook. Willowbrook was the initial name of the overall Millstone subdivision back in two thousand and six. That plan was for a residential subdivision that also included the fifteen-point-eight-eight acre parcel, which is the, the subject of tonight's meeting, which was for, that parcel was for an assisted living facility and nursing home facility. The overall development, Willowbrook development failed to take off at that time, and then in two thousand and twelve, it came, came back for approvals as a, to a reconfigured, re- revisioned residential subdivision known as Millstone. So that plan, the fifteen-point-eight-eight acres, at that point was under separate ownership. And so the new Millstone planned development did not cover that fifteen-point-eight-eight acres. So that left the old Willowbrook master plan in control of that parcel, as far as what's allowed for, for the, for zoning, zoning-wise. So that current plan, the, the old Willowbrook plan, it does allow assisted living slash nursing home facility with a hundred and eighty skilled nursing beds and eighty-five assisted living units. And images that accompanied that plan showed a two-story, one large two-story, centralized facility. And before I go any further on that, on the, if, if the new plan that's being proposed tonight is approved by the Planning Commission and by BOMA, it will replace the current, the currently approved master plan, that old Willowbrook plan will be replaced by this new one. If the Planning Commission and BOMA do not approve the currently proposed plan, that will leave that currently approved old Willowbrook plan in place for that parcel. I just want to make that clear. So the proposed plan, Thrive Senior Living is proposing, is proposing a new combined development plan. The plan proposes to add independent living as an allowed use. Instead of having any nursing home or assisted living units, they're proposing a total of a hundred and sixty-nine independent living units. Of those, forty-nine would be single home cottages, the remainder, or a hundred and twenty, are in buildings one through three, which front on Cages, sorry, Carriage House Lane, there's a two-story stacked flats, and then in, in the three-story main building. They are providing, they are providing the required twenty-foot minimum landscape buffer around the perimeter of the facility, as well as a sixty-foot stream buffer along the southeast property line. Independent living has a maximum allowed density of fifteen units per acre. They're proposing ten-point-six units per acre at a total of a hundred, a hundred and sixty-nine units. They are proposing a number of amenities that, which include a pool, golf slash putting green, two dog parks, an outdoor gaming area, pickleball courts, and a garden area. They do meet the city's standards for parking for an independent living facility. Speaking to the issue of storage and garages under the Planning Commission is used to homes and new townhomes, under our regulations, aren't allowed to count their garages as parking because of that issue. However, in, independent living is classified differently. Independent living is not subject to that, to that criteria. So for independent living, they are allowed to count the garages. They are requesting a waiver. The, the current master plan shows an image that indicates the assisted living and nursing home facility would be two stories, and the zoning ordinance limits buildings in this area, in this, in this zoning to thirty-five feet. Thrive is requesting that the main facility be, to be three stories and about thirty-nine feet in height, or thirty-eight feet, eight inches to be exact. The criteria that the Planning Commission is to use in considering a planned development is listed at the end of the staff report, and the findings of fact that need to be included in any final motion are, is listed as the number-one planning staff comment. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Timothy. As I mentioned, if y'all would say anything, introduce yourselves on that and just, and just kind of, whatever you'd like to add on that, and then we'll open up the questions. Press the button if you would, please.
How about now?
Yes, you're good.
Timothy did a good job introducing this, so I'll be very brief. My name's Jeremy Ragsdale with Thrive Senior Living, and I have got our engineer here with us in case I'm asked a question that's way over my head. And he can also correct me if I'm, I'm wrong on something here. Do I just click this to move it forward?
Just a second.
One second. Well, I'll, the, the first slide is just an intro slide. So we're based in Atlanta, we're a developer, owner, and operator of multiple senior living communities throughout the East Coast. It's an important distinction here that we're, we're a developer and operator and, and owner, so we're, you know, we're not developing to speculatively sell to someone else. This is, this is a community that, like the others that we develop, we would, we would operate. We've never built the same community twice, so in, in a couple of dozen of these communities, we always designed something really kind of custom for the market and for the site. I won't, I won't repeat what Timothy said, but we're, we are submitting today for comprehensive plan amendment on this particular parcel. I'm gonna skip ahead here a little bit. This was originally zoned, as you heard, for a skilled nursing and assisted living facility up to, I believe, two hundred and seventy units. So it's quite a, quite a dense, quite a large number of units for this site. As you may know, a nursing home is a relatively commercial type of use, very much a twenty-four-hour day operation with three shifts. We do own and operate a, a lot of assisted living facilities. We don't own or operate, or nor have we developed any skilled nursing or, or nursing homes. We really feel when we first saw this site, that for being located in the middle of a residential community like this, I'm not sure it would have received that zoning in a, in a more thoughtful and comprehensive plan, and that a, a more residential use is more appropriate, given how this sits in the neighborhood. So this is the, the concept that we have come up with here. I want to make a quick note about the site as it sits today. It's a difficult site. The, the site was poorly graded initially, I think in two thousand and six or seven, and since two thousand and six or seven, wetlands have actually developed on the site, so there are identified wetlands on the site. The area you see in the upper left-hand corner, so the northwest side of the site, is sort of highlighted there in a, sort of a dog bone type shape. That area is either a small stream or wetlands that will have to be mitigated and, and cannot be crossed without a permit or, or wetlands mitigation. We have applied with TIDAC and are in the process of mitigating those wetlands. It's an expensive and lengthy process, as you probably know, but as the site sits today, unless someone goes to the effort to do this, the only usable entrance to the site is the entrance off of, I believe it's Cherry Hill on the south side. The, the main planned entrance there on the, on the west side is not usable, as you would have to cross wetlands. The also, the only buildable area on the site right now without mitigating these wetlands is the, the eastern side of the site, which pushes it up against the, the Owl Hollow area, as you can see. So, you know, a, a developer in the future who wanted to develop an assisted living or nursing home here would kind of face the same issues that we did of either going through a year-long process of mitigating the wetlands to free up the entire site, or would take the path of least resistance here and build on the currently buildable area of, of this site. So there is some rock that we've discovered on this site as well. There's a small blue shaded area on the bottom of the site, I'll get to that in a moment. We've modified our site plan to avoid, as much as we can, having to impact that rock in, in any way. So what we are proposing is currently a hundred and sixty-nine units. We've heard a few different varying unit counts tonight. This is where we stand today, is a hundred and sixty-nine units. We've lost some units in order to shrink the size of the community and pull some of these units back away from the neighbors and back away from the property line. And if you see, is this a laser pointer? I guess it's not. If you see on, on the southern edge of the site, on the last image where I showed, there, there was some rock, yes, that's correct. We've pulled those cottage units north up away from the neighbors in order to, to not impact that rock and to provide a little bit more of a buffer there. The, the way that the site lays out, we don't anticipate a whole lot of cut or deep digging across the rest of the site. There's probably some fill on this site. And the, the, the way that we've thought through the design of this site is we wanted to match the, the product that we build, especially around the outside of the site, with the neighbors. So on the left side of the screen, those three dark buildings, it's hard to tell here, those three dark buildings that face Carriage House Lane are two-story, it's called a stacked flat product, but it's, it essentially will look like a two-story townhome, which is exactly what is across the street currently on Carriage House Lane. The, the border of the rest of the site is single-story cottages, which are the same kind of scope and size and feel as the villas and the homes that abut them, and it would be backyard to backyard, all, all the way around there. Make sure I'm not leaving anything out here. The, the stacked flats will have a one-car garage, one garage for each unit. The villas will have one and two-car garages, depending on the size of the unit. And the apartments in the central building, there, there's actually some garages there on the ground floor of that apartment. They're all interior facing, they don't face the outside of the site there. But those will be available and there's enough garages for about half of the, the residents there to lease a garage if they wish. There's surface parking for, for the rest. When, so we had a neighborhood meeting with many of the, of the neighbors, a lot of you here tonight were there, back in April, had some food and put up a bunch of display Had some food and put up a bunch of display boards with different ideas of what we could do here on the site. We included some images of the aesthetic of the community, what we could make it look like. We offered a few different options. One of those sets of images was a clear favorite of the neighbors. It's this one. We've since commissioned the architect to, to essentially design the community around this. So, these are, believe it or not, AI-generated images, but they come really close to, to kind of capturing the look and the scope and the feel of what we want to do here. And the idea is really just to blend it in and make it look just like the, the neighboring homes around it, both in terms of color and then in sort of the scale and height of the, of the buildings around the perimeter, both the two-story townhomes and the, and the villas that are around it. Couple of issues that, that came up during the, the public comment that we anticipated, I'll try to address a few of these real briefly. We've submitted a traffic study, had a pretty detailed traffic study done. Our understanding is the metrics that are in these traffic studies are for, generally for residential communities. So, they don't really specify or change for a senior living community specifically, or an independent living community like this. It's projecting 47 peak morning hour trips and 55 peak evening hour trips here. It's been our experience that in, in senior living, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna compare this to, to the existing zoning in a nursing home in a moment, but for independent living like this, the age restriction may be 55, but the average age in these types of communities is actually about 74. So, it's, it's quite a bit older than that restriction. And being generally retired at that age, most of these residents, for the most part, can choose when they want to, to travel, leave and come, come and go from the site. They typically don't choose rush hour time. So, this traffic is generally a little more distributed throughout the day than in a typical, normal, not age-restricted residential environment. Additionally, the, the existing use as a nursing home, the traffic is very different. And so, typically in a nursing home, you're either working eight-hour shifts or 12-hour shifts, and there's two or three periods a day where a number of employees leave and, and come into the, to the community at the same time. So, it creates a little more lumpy traffic overall. And we, I don't have a comparison for you as to what the total traffic count would be between the two uses, because you, we have no way of knowing how big of a nursing home someone might decide to build here. But we, we have submitted the numbers for, for ours. We are, we do have an excess of 19 parking spaces over the current requirement. Keep in mind, tonight's not a site plan approval. We'll be back to you with the site plan if this moves forward. And we're, we would also like to find areas for more parking in, inside the community. But we, we do think we have ample, as we are today. So, to, to, the, the variance, the waiver that we are requesting is a height variance. But as you, as you heard Timothy say, it's, it's about a three-foot, eight-inch height variance from what's there, what's, what's there today. So, the, you know, the image that was in a almost 20-year-old zoning for this showed a two-story building, but the actual restriction is at 35 feet, and we're requesting about a, almost a four-foot increase over that. And I think that the way that we've laid this site out, where the, the, the larger building is the brown sideways H shape that you see there in the middle, thank you. The idea, again, is to pull that as close to the middle of the site as possible and sort of screen it around with density that matches the, the homes on either side. So, you know, we feel it's a, it's a relatively low impact to have a building of that height that doesn't back up to a neighbor directly that, that's of a different height. The specific concerns about Al Hollow, we hear that loud and clear. When we first met with the neighborhood back in April, and by the way, we, we had another neighborhood meeting this afternoon from 3:00 to 5:00, and we had about 31 people show up for that. Mostly very positive feedback and, and commentary that we got there. But we had these display boards out and were able to walk some of the neighbors through this. When we first met with the neighbors back in April, we had not done the, the survey work and the topography on the site, so we weren't able to really figure out what the heights would look like. Now, we, we have. That's one reason for the reduction in the number of units you see here. But along Al Hollow, there will be a retaining wall there. And so, she mentioned that there, and she's correct, there's a slope from their yard up onto this site. The idea here is that we will build a retaining wall. We could build the retaining wall directly on the property line and provide a larger backyard for our residents. But what we would like to do is pull the retaining wall back towards our units and offer a landscape buffer of trees, other plantings, and we're happy to work with each individual homeowner and do whatever they feel is right there to, to screen that wall as much as possible from them below the wall on our property, but at the same level as, as their yard, and then do another row of landscaping at the top of that yard in, in the, in the backyard space of, of our villas at the top of the wall. We feel like it, it provides a good privacy solution for both. It's, it's certainly better, I think, for, for sightlines and lighting and everything else than leaving that a slope, even if the units were pulled a little bit further back. I still think you would have some visibility. But with this solution, as long as that wall is screened with really good landscaping from day one for both parties, we feel like this is a really, a really good solution. So, we provided sort of a cutaway here so that, so that you and the residents of Al Hollow could, could see what we're proposing there. And again, we're happy to work with them to customize that, that landscaping if we move forward to, to a site plan approval. That's, that's it for me, and I am happy to take any questions from you guys.
I'll open up to questions, comments from commissioners. Commissioner Silkwood.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you for being here. It, it looks like a beautiful facility, like, like the architecture and everything. And I do have several questions, but really, for me, the most pressing issue right now is something that came up in public comments, which is the water supply situation. And that's probably better addressed by our public works, so maybe we can get a little more information about that.
Actually, it would be White House, and we don't handle the water supply or the sewer issues, so.
You can't.
I can't really, I can't really answer to that question.
There's, you don't know anything about problems there?
I don't.
Really?
Know nothing about it.
Okay.
Yeah, it would, it would have to be White House Utility District to answer those questions.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans.
I, I've got a, I've got a few observations. First of all, the brief history, the second page of this, if you would put it up there. Typically, when I make a decision up here.
Can y'all put up the second page?
Pardon me?
I, I was requesting them, I don't think they heard you.
When I make a decision up here on behalf of the planning commission, I look at a development in its entirety and what all is included there and maybe why. And I can't to save my neck figure out why there was an assisted living facility put in this subdivision in 2006, particularly on that piece of property. I drove all the way around it today, and that's literally a hole in the dead middle of a residential area. And we went through a similar situation over on Sanders Ferry Road, where there was an assisted living facility that was attempting to be rezoned for high-density housing, and that didn't happen. But I, I would question if, if the, the body in charge at the time, the people on the planning commission, on BOMA, in 2006, when they approved that, I would assume that they would have looked at that development in its entirety. And I see in this brief history that they included single-family homes, a small commercial area, an assisted living facility, and nursing home. Well, when that plan was abandoned, it would appear to me, and I don't know about the political nuances here, that that particular 15 acres, the zoning on that would have been abandoned also in favor of a later development, which didn't include that 15 acres. So, I, I would like to hear more about that, and maybe I should have done a little more homework before I came in. But that doesn't fit either, under either term, to, to my way of thinking. So, I certainly won't be voting for the rezon, and would like to know how we wound up like this. Oftentimes, we're stuck with something that previous BOMAs and previous planning commissions did in 2006. And as someone said in a public hearing, things change, times change, roads change, traffic patterns change, and we still get stuck with those. And we can't do anything about that, except is, is there, is there a possibility that was abandoned in some way? Probably not. But in any case, the zoning is the zoning, and I just, I don't see it fitting there in that subdivision, especially after having driven all the way through there today. It just doesn't look right, doesn't fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Hasty, before I get to your question comment, I wanted to open it up to either Timothy or Director Free to address the question that Commissioner Evans just asked.
Yes. As Timothy had explained earlier, the original plan development that was approved was Willow Brook, and as you said, it was basically the nursing home and assisted living surrounded by mostly residential, single-family homes, but then some commercial, and some of that commercial is still there today, but yet still not developed, just like the, the nursing home. But when, when the property, plan development is approved, or plan development is also rezoning, and so unless it is rezoned differently, then it stays as it is. And through the years, you know, part of what, part, and we've got several areas that we have very similar situations that, that have happened. And, but what happens is, a lot of times, if the city initiates the rezoning, then we just got to be very careful how we're doing that, because we're going to significantly change what was, what was approved. But there is a process that we could do that. But then we've got to look at, we can't just, it has to be rezoned back to what it was. And then you end up with basically maybe rezoning something back residential unrestricted, you know, in that area for what it, maybe what it was back in the day, whenever it was, we don't have R-20 and R-15 anymore, but whatever those different zonings would allow, then those could be the things that were done. But as we sit here today, then by right, that has been approved and, and it's done. But, but as, as moving, moving forward with it, as, as we're looking at the proposal that we have tonight, then it's just a determination of, that's an ask. So, it's asking, hey, we would like to do this, and going through this process. As Timothy had said earlier, if it is denied, then the, the plan still stands for the old 2006 plan would still, would still be in effect.
Thank you, Director Free. Commissioner Hasty.
I agree with Mr. Evans. That just don't fit. It looks totally out of place in that area. And a lot of times, when rezoning is done, they throw a little egg, like, we're gonna take care of the senior citizens, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do that, to help get their plans passed. And apparently, it was successful here. And for that site, what we're doing is basically changing the use, right? From skilled and assisted to independent. I don't think there's any way humanly possible somebody could put 180 skilled units and 85 assisted living units on that site, on that topography. However, that's their right. They have that vested right. And I learned a real lesson today from the staff on vested rights, on another issue. And they've got that right. And as a matter of fact, it's been that way. And one of the property owners, Jason, said, "I knew that when I bought my lot." So, he knew it. And everybody else out there, I guess, knew that that is a possibility. Couple of other questions. I know the state has some fairly secure, or regulations governing assisted living and nursing beds. Does the state have specific regulations when it comes to independent living?
If that's directed at me, I can, I can answer it. No, sir, the, the independent living is not a licensed community with the state.
Okay. That's what I thought. So, it's an independent living. It's rental units, period. To me, it's nothing more than a high-density apartment rental in the middle of the rest of that subdivision. I can't support that for that, for that area. So, I will be voting, voting no.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasty. Commissioner Slatter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Sorry, Jason. I'm reading through everything, and I don't see it, so forgive me if it's here and I've just missed it. What are the average sizes of these three various, or four? No, three various sort of collections of homes that you're talking about building?
On the, on the small end, there's some one-bedroom units that are in the high 700-square-foot range. The majority of these units are two-bedroom units that are somewhere between 1,100 and 1,600 square feet.
Thank you.
Commissioner Martin.
Thank you. I just wanted to circle back. I think somebody had talked about maybe some water issues. There's a Hendersonville fire here. I don't know if they have any history or knowledge about water in that area.
So, the developer has provided a hydrant flow study for that area, and kind of depending on the, the usage of the property and then the building construction type and all that, that'll determine the water usage there. And they are kind of right there at the cusp of being, of having adequate water for the, for the requirement, so, according to the code.
Would that be related to any issues that the residents have, domestic water? Is your flow test from a different?
That's, that's gonna be from the, the flow test of the hydrant to make sure that we have enough water to put out a fire of, of a certain building type or size of the building, or what the usage is of those buildings. It doesn't have anything to do with the domestic water itself, so.
All right. Thanks. If I could continue, I did want to have a question for the developer. You, you did a traffic study, right?
That's correct.
So, I looked on the slide you had, but it, it's kind of said, hey, this is the traffic demand or the parking demand, but it didn't really compare it to before. Is it more burdensome now, or?
In, any development here is going to add net cars, absolutely.
I meant between the other development plan, the 2006.
Between skilled nursing and this?
Yes.
We do not have a comparison between those two uses.
All right. So, I do think that there is going to be a significant parking and traffic impact. I think with the, the 2006 assisted living, that's, that requirement is one space for three to four residents, and independent is at least one for a resident. So, every parking space is going to be a vehicle, and there's going to be, I think, more, more traffic issues. The other concern I have is, in 2006, the purchasers of the, the homes that are around this development kind of bought it with, hey, this is what we're, we're dealing with. Should we purchase the home or not? You know, that was kind of part of the equation, and I think someone had spoken about it, too. And looking at the two plans, I could see why, I would, I would have gone ahead and purchased a home next to this, because it's, you got the big building in the middle, and then it's surrounded by, you know, parking and trees and stuff like that, which I think is nice. In fact, some of the residents that back up had a nice, looks like a pond, and now they're gonna have like 20, 20 units there, so. Those are just kind of my thoughts.
Understood. I think, you know, the 2006 plan was just a, a rendering for a zoning, that was not an approved site plan in 2006. So, the engineering, the topography of the site, none of that had been taken into account for the drawing that was shown there. So, and in fairness, we, we did a similar drawing before we kind of explored the topography of the site, too. So, at this point, this one's a little bit more refined, but I hear your point.
Commissioner Slatter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to the 55-plus and it not being a regulated licensed bed community, so I'm assuming the covenants would be created by you around how long grandchildren can live in the, the home, and, and what are your current practices around that?
Yeah, that's a good question. This has come up recently at another development. We, we would typically either have a 55 or a 62-plus age restriction for at least one resident of each unit. No one under 18 could claim residency there, so no one could live full-time, and we would have a, usually a two-week-per-year restriction on anyone under 18. And we would have a, usually a two-week-per-year restriction on anyone under 18 living there. So it gives, gives a little margin for the grandkids to come stay. But, you know, the goal is to make sure there's no one under 18 living in the community that could claim residency and impact the school district at all.
Okay, thank you. And following on to that, so if I understood correctly, your general practice is two residents in a unit. One can be 55-plus, one can be 62 and a half-plus as the minimum age? Is that what you said?
No, no, no. We, we would either pick, so Fair Housing Act allows you to have these thresholds at 55, 55, 62, or 65. And we would, we would typically choose one of those for, for one of the residents of the unit.
And the, the traffic study, the numbers that you, that you provided, that looked really favorable. Forty-seven morning peak hour trips and 55 evening peak hour trips for this 169-unit community. Are those numbers national averages? Are those Nashville-area averages? Or are those Sumner County averages?
We submitted the full traffic study, which has where those numbers came from, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
In full transparency, I think I would throw a flag on the field on those. If it's 55-plus, I think the, the national statistics show that people are working longer and longer. And to assume that at 55, there's a major shift. Now, I understand what you said about the average age being closer to 74. So I'll ask the same question. Is that a national average number?
Seventy-four is a national average number. Yeah, and it also tracks with communities in our own portfolio, too.
Okay, thank you. And one of the citizens' comments mentioned another community that has a 13% vacancy rate today. Is that fairly consistent with what you see across your portfolio?
You know, this, so this will, if, if, if we move forward with this, this will be a, a huge investment. We've obviously done a lot of research on the market side. This product, from both a size-of-unit standpoint and amenities and services offered standpoint, is intended to be a hybrid between what we would call active adult, which is what Album at Indian Lake is, and independent living, which, Clarendale, Clarendon?
Clarendale.
Is, is probably the closest example to give you there. And it's priced in between the two as well. And so amenities that we would have on-site here would be far more serviced. If you have the availability of housekeeping, we would have a little coffee shop available to residents inside. And other amenities that are above and beyond what you would find at a age-restricted apartment complex, which is what active adult is and what, what Album essentially is. Or a full-service independent living community, where you would have a restaurant and food included in the rent. So the idea here is really a hybrid product. And that's where we're seeing the vast majority of the demand.
And everything here would still be owned by Thrive?
Correct.
So everything is rental?
Correct.
Okay. I think you have worked very hard to develop something for this very odd piece of land that is continuing to evolve into issues with wetlands that appeared. And I applaud the efforts you put into it. Unfortunately, to me, it's just a very large apartment complex and rentals, and I am not in favor of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Just a quick question, and maybe the answer was just given, I didn't hear it. But is, is this 15 acres of, is it, will it be part of Millstone or Willowbrook? Or does it, does it combine with the other part of the development that, for purposes of homeowners associations? Or is it standalone? Is it by itself at this point?
Our, our understanding is it's by itself at this point.
I'll take this opportunity to ask some questions and follow up the comments. Thrive Senior Living, what, we heard this talked about, and I think even read the descriptions, NHC property. Do y'all have any affiliation with NHC?
Not formally.
Okay, what do you mean, not formally on that?
We're, we're not owned by NHC, and they're not an investor in our business.
Okay, so you're essentially just buying the property from them. Is that?
That's, that's a fair statement. NHC may end up also being an investor in the project moving forward.
Okay. That kind of gets to my second question then on that. Notice the 2006 plan you had, obviously senior living, your skilled nursing, I'm sorry, is the approved use on that. It looked like not only you wanted us to add this approved use, you're wanting to keep those other two.
That's, that's not actually our request. Our request was a change of use to independent living, so.
Okay, so you'd be okay giving up those? Okay. That's my misunderstanding then on that, but that's, okay. My thoughts on this is, and I hate, and we've talked about this. Eighteen years ago, there was a decision made that if I was on this body, I would not have made on that. I'm not going to try to, I don't like second-guessing people, but I, we obviously all have opinions. And I remember about 10 years ago, I was very strongly opposed to a rehab facility here in town that wanted to go into a residential area. In fact, got a little vocal on that, and got a few thousand people sign a petition on that. So I'm not, I do not like, to me, a nursing home would have the same issues as would a rehab facility on that. You've got folks coming and going, you've got ambulances, you've got all those sorts of things. And that's just the nature of what they are. Commercial does not belong in that residential like that. So with that, I hate yours less, but I'm not in love with it. And, and, and I'll always be blunt, you always get that from me. But my issues here with this, one is I just think you're still doing it too densely on this. Just the parking issue is the fact that I think Mr. Whitten brought up, or shared with us, that you do not have to count, or you're able to count garage space on that. I see that as just being overparked on, or not parked enough, and just being over, too many people trying to park there. I would be more inclined to support this if you potentially had, not potentially, but if you had way less density, potentially if it was a two-story building instead of three, that might be a solution on that. We're just trying to pack too many people into this space right now. So as it's presented, I cannot vote for this. I think you've probably heard from a number of folks here, I know you're probably counting in your head. What you've heard on that is for folks that have stated that, mind ten, if this is something that's going to be presented as it is tonight, we vote no, but I would want to give you the opportunity. If you wanted to defer this and bring it back with some substantial changes, that is your option on that, too. If you, if you'd want to do that before we take a vote here. But, but other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none at this point, unless there is a request for a deferral from the applicant, I'm going to entertain a motion from a commissioner on that. And this can be a, like a motion to approve, it can be a motion to deny. Just whatever, whoever makes a motion, just please support it with finding his facts on.
We can, we can request a deferral. I think it's probably worth making some changes and coming back and seeing what we can do.
Okay, with that, I will then make a motion that we entertain the applicant's request for a deferral on that, so.
I'll move to accept the applicant's request for a deferral.
And.
Second.
Second, I heard Commissioner Martin first on that, so we're going to, but we'll go into a roll call vote on that.
Before we go to that, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So when we defer, it'll be next month that they're coming back? And we're into the holidays and all the residents? And will there be another public hearing? And will there be another neighborhood hearing? And?
Director Free, will you address that, please?
Yeah, that is a lot of problematic. Do you think it's something where you're talking about getting back on the December agenda or the January agenda?
I, I don't think that's realistic, because I think the next step for us would be to redraw something and meet with the neighbors again.
Yeah.
You know, if it's, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to think through options. If it's more advantageous to deny it tonight, frankly, and then we just resubmit with something new, I don't know the consequences of doing that. But our intent would probably be to redraw, reconnect with you guys, meet with the neighbors again, and then come back.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the, if the deferral is granted, then the deferral can be sometime after the first of the year, looking at January, no later than February, to come back with a significantly changed plan. As far as the public hearing, since we're pushing it out that far, there would just be a new public hearing. And everybody that got noticed, we would send that notice back out there. Probably the signs, we may just leave those signs out there during this, during this period of time. But we would let everybody know what was going on, when it, when it would be coming back. But so, no sooner than the January meeting, but no later than the February. If it goes past the February, if this deferral is approved, then you just need to start all over and submit something brand new.
Understood.
Do we, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Considering that it, it takes time for you to get with your architects and do what you need to do. You have Thanksgiving holidays, you have Christmas holidays, people taking vacations. I think trying to have a public meeting with, or not a public meeting, but a neighborhood meeting in December is probably next to impossible. I would prefer to see it come in February. That way they can have their meetings in January and, and come back if they so choose to do so.
Yeah.
I'll ask a question, Director Free. Do we need to amend the motion, or remake the motion to specify that? Or is that something we just leave to?
I, I think the motion can be, as, as it was stated, but maybe adding to it, would be a motion, a motion by the applicant to defer and come back to the Planning Commission at its February meeting.
Okay, I'll rephrase the motion. I'll make a motion to accept the applicant's request for a deferral and then have a new meeting for the February agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion of Commissioner Altizer and a second from Commissioner Martin, and we'll move into a roll call vote on that now. Zach, will you read the totals, please?
Motion has passed with a total of seven yeses, zero abstains, and one no.
Thank you. Thank, thank the applicant for being here tonight.
Thanks, guys.
Yes, sir. And thank the public for being here tonight on that, too. And y'all are welcome to stick around. But if you want to go home, can't blame you for that, so. We do not. We're going to, Director Free just mentioned that we're going to have, he'll have staff look at that before they get the answer. And that would be a question for kind of applicants, too, what they can figure out on that. I know there's some moving parts in that, but yeah, we'll try to get that, so. Next. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, which, and we're going to kind of go on and finish up with the meeting while y'all are kind of leaving this. Next up is item eight on our agendas, development plans. No, excuse me, we already went that, yeah, site plans, yeah, that's what I meant. Timothy, I think this was yours, this is for Walmart's remodel, their site plan on that. And do we have a representative from the developer here as well? Okay, let Timothy kick it off. Kind of same process on that when he gets done. So. Timothy, you want to give just a second till the chatter kind of does down.
Are you going to need my address?
You can just say your city.
No, do you need my address when I say move?
No. Or your business address. We're not going to send you questions, right?
You're welcome to. And if you put a return address, we'll get one back.
All right, Timothy, we'll make, take two on this now.
Okay. All right. So Walmart submitted a project for an addition to their building, which is eligible for staff-level review and approval. However, during that review, but part of the application was to redo some of the colors on the building and add quite, quite a bit of sort of bright blue to the, to the front insides of the building. Because of the design guidelines in the zoning ordinance, which, which states that colors should be generally earth-toned muted colors, staff was not comfortable approving that request for that color. The applicant did, then requested to go to the Planning Commission to get approval for that color. And I would just point out that back in 2022, a similar request came before the Planning Commission for, to, to increase the amount of blue color. That request is shown in that very bottom image. So that was the, the 2022 request that was denied by the Planning Commission. The, the second one, the one in the middle, is the current request that, that staff could not, could not approve. And that the top image there is what they currently have approval for and have on their building. So they're requesting to have that, that bottom image approved.
The middle image.
I'm sorry, middle image, correct.
Thank you, Timothy. Did you introduce yourself or in?
My name is Brittany Fernandez.
Can you step a little closer to the microphone, please?
My name is Brittany Fernandez. I work with HFA AE, it's Architects and Engineers. I don't know why we did that. Our address is 1705 South Walton Boulevard, Suite 3, Bentonville, Arkansas 72712. I don't use it very often, I had to think about it. I'm here with Desiree, she actually submitted the application.
Okay.
So just so you know, the color blue on the building is very similar to the one we're asking for, but it's actually closer to her shirt color, is their new one. So it is, it is still bright. It is still a bright blue. I'm not even going to deny it, but it is slightly less obnoxious than the one that's currently on the building. Personal opinion, I did not say that. I'm sure this is recorded, sorry, Walmart. We are asking for quite a bit more. So currently, the store has about 0.96% blue on it. And we're asking for 8.8, no, I'm sorry, 8.58%. That's the entire building. If I'm going to be realistic, you can't see that building. Just the front of that, the front of that building, we're asking for 19.03% blue. It's a lot of blue. However, you can't see that building. We just drove by tonight. There are trees all over that place. We had to figure out where it was. If we didn't have GPS, we wouldn't have known that was a Walmart. You can't see the signs where they're located, they're too low. All of the trees block the signs. Our proposal is to, to raise the signs up, to make them more visible, to put them on the blue background, to make them stand out. I know this is going to sound like a crock, but it's for safety purposes. If you park on the side of the store you need to go into, you're less likely to walk through the entire parking lot to get back out. So I know it sounds like a crock, and it might be, but it's true. That's really what we try to do, is make the, the entrances more visible and the services more visible for the people in the parking lot.
Open it up to questions, comments from commissioners. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you all for being here from, all the way from my native state of Arkansas. I appreciate the, taking the time to come here and speak to us tonight. You know, that, what you just said was actually in one of my comments for this evening. When I pull up to a building, I look for the door. I don't look for a bright blue, you know, color to direct me to, I don't even pay attention to the color. I'm looking for the doorways. And personally, I really like the existing color scheme. I think you have enough of the Walmart blue, but at the same time, it blends nicely into our community. Echoing comments by Commissioner Slattery from two years ago. You know, the, the visibility is not really an issue, because everybody knows where Walmart is. And I'm part of a youth rugby club, and we have huge tournaments. Everybody goes to Walmart to get their Gatorade and their snacks. I've never heard anybody say, I can't find the Walmart. So my point in saying all that is, I really am not interested in supporting more blue. But I will say, I do like the improved and increased size of the pickup area. I think that's very necessary, and I do very much appreciate you bringing that forward.
Thanks, Commissioner Silkwood. Commissioner Slatter?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Bentonville is a little bit of a haul, and not easy to get from there to here. Although you do have a really nice airport, I wonder why. I will echo what Commissioner Silkwood said and echo, echo my comments from the previous submission. I just don't think we need the blue. You mentioned if you didn't have GPS. seeking out blue to look for Walmart. Um, I appreciate you continuing to invest in the, the store. I was commenting just this last week that from the time that I first moved to Hendersonville, um, nine years ago, to now, that the traffic at Walmart has steadily grown, it is far busier than it has ever been, and the pickup area, any additional space you can give that area every year increases the likelihood that I get my, my pickup and I survive getting home. I would much prefer to see you invest, see Walmart invest in cleaning up the landscaping in the parking lot, in repairing areas in the parking lot that are bumpy and hard to get through. Maintaining the parking lot spaces and the landscaping around the property, I think does more for the brand than splashing 19.03% blue coverage on the front of the building. I'm simply not in favor of us weakening our commitment to the look and feel of our community, simply to try to appeal to Walmart's increased demand for branding. I honestly don't understand why they even brought this forward again after it was denied the last time. I heard what you said, but I agree again with Commissioner Silkwood, I think we can all find the doors, and I think we can all find Walmart. So for that reason, I'm once again going to vote, um, in opposition of this proposal.
Can I play devil's advocate?
Please.
So Lowe's is at least 30% blue, but it's all painted canopy. So like, we're painting ephes, not metal canopy, but there's a lot of blue on Lowe's and it's just right down the street. The whole area behind their sign is blue, the entire length of the front is a giant canopy that's at an angle and the entire thing is blue. Just playing devil's advocate.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll play devil's advocate with you. Um, don't like it any better.
But you allowed it, somebody did.
Somebody did, but two wrongs don't make a right.
Right.
So, good, good argument, good attempt.
I have to try, it's my job.
Walmart corporate that will be watching this on YouTube will applaud your effort, they will applaud you fighting the fight, but I wouldn't approve the Lowe's if it came before us today, I wouldn't approve it any more than I would this. That is quite clearly a Walmart. It is quite clearly a Walmart. If nothing else, the Walmart trucks, you can follow one and find a Walmart. So, um, come up with another argument, would love to have the conversations, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of this and wouldn't vote to support it. Thank you.
I'm just gonna briefly take a moment to just kind of echo what comments kind of have been made, but I'm gonna put a little bit more positive spin on it. I think we've got one of the best looking Walmart buildings around on that, and I don't want to do anything to jeopardize it. Your shirt is lovely, by the way, I want to make that. Um, that's, that's nothing directed about the color of your shirt that you have on, but I think we've got a very aesthetically pleasing Walmart building, and then I just don't want to take it away from that, so, um, I'll be voting no as well, but with that, Commissioner Hasty?
I was one of the very few that voted for you the last time.
Thank you. I wasn't here, but I appreciate it.
I am, but I agree with Commissioner. What you're trying to do is improve your ba, your brand and the visibility and all this, that and the other. I guarantee you, you could paint it whole front blue and 90% of people that go to Walmart would never know it. They're going to Walmart, they're not looking at what color you got up there or how much it is. Plus, you are way back off. I mean, I, I don't really have a problem with that much blue, me personally, because people going to Walmart, going to Walmart, whether you paint it blue, whether you paint it red, or how much blue or how much red you put out there, but I think you've kind of hit the limit on how much we would, I would be willing to, to go with. But Commissioner, Wendy, you hit the nail on the head, and I was gonna make a comment. You want to improve your ba, brand, pave your parking lot and pay a little bit more attention to your landscaping. That would help your brand a whole lot more than the blue paint, in my opinion. And people going to Walmart, they're going to Walmart anyway, so, but I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but we'll see how the ball drops.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasty. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny, or whatever motion wants to be made. Not hearing anybody wanting to jump up.
I'll test the will. I'll test the will. I'll move to approve all colors as they have been presented.
We have a motion, can we get a second? All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Altizer and a second from Commissioner Hasty, and we'll move into a roll call vote on the motion. Commissioner Slattery?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're okay.
I couldn't wait for it to come up.
I couldn't tell if you were in deep thought or.
So motion has been denied with a total of two yeses, zero absences, and six nos.
Thank you, Zach. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is item 10, this is staff level projects that have been approved, and I'll combine that with item 11, staff level projects pending, and turn it over to Director Free and let us, let him give us an update.
All right, uh, we got the three that have been approved, and then we've got projects pending, uh, we have several of those that are pending, some of them have been hanging on there for a little, little while. Uh, also, one of the, I might note, uh, one of the in-house projects that we're reviewing is the Walmart remodel, uh, with the significant investment, uh, that they, that they are making. Also, I might note, uh, the TriStar Hendersonville Medical Center parking lot, uh, they're looking to add a substantial amount of parking to the rear back there, uh, by their medical office buildings, uh, so really, really pretty, uh, pretty nice. And I can answer any questions if anyone has, has any. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Director. Um, I don't know who lit up first, but I'm gonna mama manners and let ladies first, Commissioner Silkwood.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just, just a quick, um, question, uh, for Director Free, the broken paddle outbursts building, that, that's been hang, like, to use your term, hanging on for ever.
Yeah, that one has, but, uh, Timothy, do you have an update on that, if there is an update?
Uh, I would pass it to Stephen, I think, uh, Stephen might, might know more about that than I.
And Grant said he wanted to know. Uh, no, that, that building, um, is in the floodplain, so they've had to work through the pla, process of floodplain development, um, and part of that is floodproofing the building or elevating the habitable space, um, above the floodplain. So, uh, that, that's kind of where it stands right now. It's in their hands to come up with something that meets the intent of the project, but also elevates that first floor elevation above the floodplain, so, yeah. You're welcome.
Commissioner Martin, did you, was that kind of your same? Okay, okay. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, we, we've got item 10 of other, we have a resolution recommending acceptance of completed streets in Savannah Phase 8, Section 2, Hendersonville, Sumner County. Um, I'll entertain a motion to, actually, Director Free, will you tell us a little bit more about those streets that we're accepting on that before we entertain a motion?
Yes, this is, uh, accepting, uh, streets in Savannah, Phase 8, Section 2, uh, that have been completed. Uh, this has went through the process of going to the Public Works Committee, uh, for BOMA, uh, then next it goes to us, uh, then we move it forward, and it'll be on the next BOMA agenda for adoption.
All right, thank you, Director Free. With that, I'll make a motion to accept the resolution, to approve the resolution.
Second.
I've got a second from Commissioner Silkwood, and we'll go into a roll call vote on that one as well.
Motion has passed with a total of eight yeses, zero abstains, and zero nos.
All right, thank you. Um, item 11 is planning director comments, Director Free, do you have anything to add that we haven't touched on already tonight?
I, I do, Mr. Chairman, I have a, a couple of things. I might, uh, want to note, uh, the retirement of Tim Nicholson, uh, he's our zoning enforcement officer, uh, and, uh, we're gonna be having a retirement party, uh, Wednesday afternoon for him, uh, so it's probably gonna be fairly big, uh, because, uh, before, several years ago, before he came to the planning, uh, worked for the planning department, uh, he was working for the Hendersonville Police Department as an officer, and, uh, he has a total of 40 years of service. That is a long time with the city of, of Hendersonville. I will also note, uh, we were very successful, uh, in getting a high quality replacement for Mr. Nicholson. Uh, if you may be familiar with, uh, Jim Manning, uh, with the Hendersonville Police Department, uh, he, I think he, he works with the Motorcycle Patrol, uh, as well, and, uh, so he, uh, he has already, uh, started to shadow Tim, and so he will be taking over, taking over for, uh, for him, uh, starting next week. Also, um, I want to note, uh, and just really commend the staff and commend the Planning Commission, uh, the city of Hendersonville, uh, we've been, uh, we received a pretty prestigious reward, award, uh, the 2024 TAPA, and what TAPA is, is the Tennessee American Planning Association, uh, and so we received their award for outstanding plan implementation, uh, for our Westlake, uh, rezoning and, uh, master plan, so, so pretty good.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so that's pretty, it's pretty prestigious and, uh, pretty competitive as well, so, uh, we're very happy about that, and I just want to, uh, acknowledge, uh, Mr. Green, uh, for all of his work on the, uh, the Westlake Plan, and he submitted the application as well, so, uh, I appreciate that. Also, uh, you know, when, when, I think we're all about, out and about, and I know it happens to me all the time, people are always asking, well, what's the next big thing that's coming or what's, what's happening? I'm sure none of you get that question. Uh, so, uh, you know, I get that question all the time, I got it from Kevin at Publix, and hi Kevin, if you're watching, he's, he said he was an adamant, uh, he, he was a regular watcher of our program, and so we really appreciate that, and we really do appreciate the folks in the community that are engaged in the community and keep up with what's going on, and, uh, so we really appreciate, uh, their interest. But I will, uh, just list a couple of things that are going to be on the agenda at next, uh, in the December, December, at the December meeting, uh, we're gonna have the Redeemer Church over on 177 Benita Parkway, a lot of stuff going on over there on Benita Parkway, and they're looking to, to build about a 12,000 square foot, uh, new building over there, uh, so that's, uh, that's pretty exciting. Uh, also, JLR, uh, that we had deferred is gonna be back, uh, at our December meeting, so we'll see what kind of changes they have, uh, for that, uh, for that plan development. Yes, and it's, yeah, I'm not for sure about that. Uh, and then also, uh, one that might be interesting to people is the Fortune House Restaurant that had closed down because of the tornado, uh, they're actually, uh, they submitted plans that you'll be reviewing next, uh, next month, uh, for a new restaurant at 123 Walton Ferry Road, uh, so that's, uh, that's pretty good, and that's in our dockside neighborhood, and we've seen a lot of interest, uh, in our dockside neighborhood. So that zoning classification is really stimulating quite a bit of interest, uh, so, uh, we see a lot of things going, going on with that. And that's everything, uh, that I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Free, and congratulations to staff on the award on that, and Grant, especially on that child. Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Anisha Holman, um, I have no clue how this process works. Um, I'm a mental health therapist and my husband, he researched, because we've been working with our surveyor, architect, and contractor, we're at 108 Nox Drive, and I just left the office meeting with the client, and he was like, hey, it's on the city's agenda. And so, I was like, okay, I don't know what to do, I know where it is, but I will go and see if they're going to talk about it. Um, and so I saw it online, but I don't think we got to it, is that something that was overlooked?
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can explain that.
Okay.
Uh, so yeah, uh, the items that we just went over, uh, that the chairman was referring to as staff proj, staff level projects, we've approved, and, uh, staff level projects that are pending, uh, your project on Note, the Nox Edition, uh, that's pending, and that's something we're doing in-house, uh, with the staff, so it's done at the staff level, and so actually, it's, doesn't come before, uh, the Planning Commission.
Okay.
And then this is just for them, just, we're updating them of all the things that the staff is, is doing. And so your, your project, I'm not sure exactly where it's at, uh, but it's in that pending group of, uh, of items, but there was nothing you needed to do this evening.
Okay, well, hey, this is an awesome time.
But thank you very much for coming, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, scary one.
Yeah.
We live here, we've been here 10 years now. We're not involved.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah. With that, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, hearing none, motion carries, and we'll see y'all next month. Thank you very much.